Good morning, I call to order the Saline County Commission Public Forum and Meeting of April 12th, 2016 to order. Would you all please stand and join me in a flag salute in a moment of silence?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move next to the public forum where it's a time where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time?
Commissioners, do you want to do a roll call here?
Please, thank you.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Guile.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Larson. Note, Commissioner Smith is absent today.
Thank you for the reminder. Again, moving to the public forum, is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time?
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. If I could characterize what happened at last week's meeting, I would summarize it with the term money madness. There were a lot of things that happened that made me wonder about what is the state of mind between of this commission when it comes to handling money matters. A lot of this will come up later as the different points, so unlike other meetings where I usually speak here and am quiet the rest of the meeting, I'll be up before you frequently. There are two items not on the agenda today that I wanted to bring to your attention. When it comes to, we've had two incidences lately where individuals have come to the county wanting to purchase goods or services. I'm referring to the individuals with Link Road who went to, by aggregate, to put on their earth road. And then there are property owners at Coronado Heights who are seeking a right-of-way vacation for a fracture-critical bridge that was previously closed. In doing, in listening to the discussions, I heard you all go from huh, is this something we want to do for some, to almost a 180 and say, almost considering giving a bridge away or putting aggregate giving gravel away. And I would just say that maybe the wealthy people can come to you and ask for those things. I just ask that you treat everyone with the same standards so that any others in like circumstances receive the same treatment. In another discussion from last week dealt with Central Kansas Mental Health Foundation and their contract with the jail to provide some services to inmates who are about to be released to make sure that they have clothing, housing, perhaps a job, medications, things like that lined up. One of the things I heard was that they had worked with 50 individuals, 20 of those inmates, or 25 had been released, 20 have done well, five have returned. The part that wasn't clear to me was what's happening with the other people they're seeing. Kathy Moser did mention that they're going to prison. And prisoners don't have much of a need for housing or medication or clothing or those kind of things. Those needs are taken care of. And there was, you know, requests to look at expanding that pool of money. And I just heard enough information and it wasn't given backup information, so I could kind of sleuth this out. But just be careful as you consider those things because in some ways I wasn't certain if the money was going and used as intended, that perhaps it needed to be screened a little bit differently in terms of who they actually go visit with and see as they do the grant. And if I can just, to reduce time, Don, when it comes to amending the minutes, if you could show that Dave Nichols was here, I didn't see that on my draft copy. And the other question I have on the minutes, when you approved the $25,000 for additional crack ceiling, it didn't specify where that was going to come from, what fund it was going to come from. I remember Gary Nash saying something about a 10-year fund and if we could just get that in the minutes, I'd appreciate it.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Norman Nanosalina, Kansas. I wanted to remind people, especially the commissioners, I've been talking about what is permissible in government meetings. And upstairs in room 204, it's even posted, your code of conduct does not allow elected officials to promote their own personal agenda in a public government meeting. So I would ask people, they need to go back and read the code of conduct for county commissioners. So that's kind of what I had.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Ray Hurska, 235 North Santa Fe. I'm going to bring the subject of announcements again. Changed from announcements to commissioners' announcements. And now announcements are not on the public agenda today. And I was going to make a few comments, that's kind of a premise of what is actually going on. Says, "My position about Commissioner Smith using open public meeting under agenda announcements for religious comments violates the Establishment Clause of the U.S. Constitution has changed." In other words, I changed my position on that. At first, I said his content, or comments were of no concern if the public had an opportunity to rebut or offer comment. The chairman refused to allow public response or rebuttal. After thinking about my previous position, I have concluded the Smith Agenda Religious Announcements should not be allowed in open public meetings. And I believe that the Saline County Commissioner's decision is violating the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. Additionally, what happens when Muslim, Jews, or other religions want to do the same by promoting religious comments in open public meetings? After the pledge of allegiance, there's a moment of silence, which is prayer that is as close to religious belief that is fair for all religions. In summary, I would ask the commission, and especially the chairman, to follow the U.S. Constitution and do not promote one religion over another. And I wish to thank you for the opportunity to comment about that.
Thank you, sir.
Norman Nanos, again, I forgot something.
I figured so.
In Sunday's issue of the Salina Journal, right on the front page, and this has been my pet peeve, my pet project that people need to look at in the future. We're going to run out of water. So we better not think about moving forward for economic development because if you ain't got water, it ain't going to work. And there's another issue I found. We're going to start removing these dams we've got in this country because it turns out the Native Americans still own the water rights. The Supreme Court is ruling that if they want to take out the dams, they can't. It's right here in the paper.
All right.
So we better look to the future, where are we going to get our water?
All right. Anyone else would like to come forward today? Seeing none, we'll move on to regular business, item number one.
Approval Agenda for the public forum today.
I make a motion that Mr. Chairman, was there something we wanted to change in anything at all? That we moved, that we approved the agenda for the public forum as presented?
No, second to that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 4-0, item number two.
First of all, did you get those corrections, Don? Do I need to make a motion to include the corrections that were omitted?
Well, Don, do we have a, I mean, if people show up, do we have a list where they can sign in so we know who's here? Because you can't, you don't know everybody's name that shows up.
Yeah, and if they show up upstairs, sometimes you have your back to the audience. Okay.
Well, we might, we might bring one down here and that would eliminate. If they don't sign it, it's not our fault, you know. And I don't, I don't think you can keep track of everybody that lives in Saline County and their name and their address, so, you know, if somebody wants to show up and note that they're present, be sure and tell Don. Or we'll try to have a,
Sign up sheet.
A sign up sheet where the people can sign up at each meeting. We'll try to, don't you,
You want to include whoever's here, I've never done that.
No, I, I don't, I don't.
I don't think we need to.
But we could, we could have a sign up sheet so if they do want to sign up,
Upstairs, I don't think it matters here.
It does matter here, doesn't it?
Well, you're not going to include that in the minutes, is what he's asking.
Okay, well, I don't know, that's what she's wanting, she's wanting him to be in the minutes evidently.
That should not be in the minutes, but sometimes we're going to have 50 people here and everybody here does not need to be,
But if we had a sign up sheet and they wanted to be in the minutes,
Everybody that speaks, Everybody that speaks should be mentioned, but not anybody just sitting in the audience.
So, see, I wasn't sure how to approve the minutes if we needed to make those corrections.
Well, I don't, if we don't have to make them, why are we going to make them?
Well, he, something about,
I mean, Karen, you're not the man that says you were here, I mean,
He came in late.
I was.
And you did come in late though.
Today.
It did both times. He did the last time too. He was halfway through when he came in.
Yeah, I didn't see him.
Yeah. And, and that's the reason why he didn't get it right off the start.
To me, it was a non-issue, I didn't,
Yeah.
I didn't either till today.
We sure apologize for not shaking your hand, Mr. Nichols.
What about the detail in Gary Nash's report? I mean, is that important? I, I don't, I'm not quite, I didn't quite follow all of that.
Well, you're, the board granted approval to spend an additional $25,000 on crack ceiling. Some of the funds are going to consider a measure today for community corrections that's going to come out of contingency reserves. This was, what, what fund is this coming out of? Because when I was there, I, my understanding was it's to come out of road and bridge, some kind of 10-year project fund. I don't want it coming out of the county's contingency reserve.
Rita, could you explain that to her, please?
And I don't think, To just approve the, the crack seal.
Didn't discuss where it was coming from, Gary, did you mention that?
I probably mentioned that it's either going to come out of that or contractual asphalt. We were waiting for the contractual asphalt bid to come in, which we got last night. So it's going to come out, it's going to come out of the contractual asphalt.
It's going to come out of your, your fund, your road and bridge fund, so which line item is,
Put in that clarification and that'll be the road and bridge, a road and bridge fund is fine, that, that's what I'm seeking.
There's quite a few different funds in the road and bridge.
Well, but I understand what she's saying, when it's coming out of the actual department, it's understood. But when you're dipping into another contingency or an emergency fund or whatever, I can see where it would affect the public.
And they would have brought that up, that was going to happen.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. So I think it's okay the way it was reported and so,
For the sake of moving on, what would you like to see?
I think we're okay.
Yeah, I would, I would like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the minutes as presented with the amendment of a caller upstairs last week.
I second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Passes 4-0, item number three.
We have a proclamation declaring April 2016 as Child Abuse Awareness Month. And Lori Blake here with us, Executive Director of CAPS.
Thank you commissioners for allowing me to be here and for declaring April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'll go ahead and just read the proclamation. This is being read not only here in Saline County, but across the state. It's a universal statewide proclamation. Whereas children are key to the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, and while children are our most valuable resource, they are also our most vulnerable. And whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. Whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas families, thus preventing far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all and we, as a community, are extending a helping hand to children and families in need. Whereas providing safe, stable, and nurturing relationships for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Whereas Child Advocacy and Parenting Services Incorporated provides both prevention and intervention programs designed to reduce risk factors associated with child abuse and neglect while focusing on educating parents and empowering children. The agency's many community collaborations respond to a variety of human needs and conditions, keeping appropriate child development in the center of all strategies. CAPS responds to a variety of human needs and conditions throughout Central Kansas while searching, serving any family seeking help at no charge. And whereas in 2015, 151 child victims of abuse or neglect or witnesses to a violent crime received advocacy, a medical exam and care by a trained SANSRT staff, referral to trauma-focused mental health services, and a forensic interview at Chris's Place Child Advocacy Center hosted at CAPS. These services are delivered through a multidisciplinary collaboration between the City of Salina and Saline County Law Enforcement, CAPS, Salina Regional Health Center, the Department of Children and Families, Child Protective Custody, Saline County Attorney's Office, Central Kansas Mental Health Center, and private therapists. Whereas child abuse, or Child Advocacy and Parenting Services began as a Child Abuse Prevention Coalition in 1976, the agency wishes to create awareness through the following free public events. We have a moving Penn Hill Garden that you'll see across our community all month long, representing the number of children and families served through our CASA program annually. There's a prevention tailgate at the Salina Liberty Football Game on Saturday, April the 23rd, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. There's also an event at Astro Books and Coffee House Poetry for Personal Power on Friday, April the 29th, at 7:00 p.m. Therefore, the Board of Saline County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Very good. And besides those three activities, is there anything else planned?
We had a blew-out Salina Day last Friday that community businesses supported us by collecting donations. Their employees wore royal blue, so we're just trying to keep those, every week having something present.
You bet, you do a great job.
And you also have a CAPS auction every year.
We do, every February.
And I've been at every one, I have attended every one of those. And I'm talking about the one that only had 19 people at the very first one.
That is phenomenal. We just had our 27th annual Celebrity Bonanza Auction and it generated $96,000 from our community to support our work. And so we, we appreciate you Commissioner Guile for being in attendance. And Commissioner Larson, who used to serve on our Board of Directors as well, so we have that history with the U.S. Commissioners as well. We appreciate that.
And the Nicholson family still presides over, Bob being there, he was at the very first one also. So just to, just to share with you, the people that attend that thing have been really advocates of CAPS.
Don Merriman's been pretty involved with it too. Don, you've been involved with it for quite a while.
And Fred, Fred was, he was at the very first.
Is it a tender and spending money?
Well, that's, they didn't spend money, there wouldn't be much going on.
I wholeheartedly support their,
I know where Don is.
Oh, no, I wasn't at the first.
Because the first one was actually, I think it was Handy Andy, Sturwalt, and Sister Monica that started that. And they had Shank, auctioneers, it was all in red coats.
Really?
Yeah, and they'd done that for like four years, I believe, when they brought Carol Lee,
Before the agency was a not-for-profit organization, so that was when it was still a Child Abuse Prevention Coalition.
Very good, motion please.
Mr. Chair, I move we declare April 2016 as Child Abuse Awareness Month.
I second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 It passes 4-0.
Very well done.
You're the new man on board, right?
Item number four.
Thank you very much.
Item number four.
We have a bid award for District Court Carpet Replacement. That's a request for action 136-16, doesn't say that on the agenda, but it's 136-16 for that RFA. Todd Height Schmidt, Court Administrator here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and scheduling me on the agenda. What you have in front of you is the request for action. Again upstairs, we've had a need for carpet for quite some time. Some of the carpets, if it wasn't, when it was here when the building was built, I'd say it's going to be 40 years old. Other carpet up there, some of you have seen, it's been rippled, some places duct taped. We did send out bid requests to five different agencies. We only had one that returned a bid price. I'll say pre-allocation was 40,000. The bid price came in at 40,786. The court, out of the court budget, we could still take the 786 out of that if the commission would approve the allocated $40,000 that was initially set aside for that.
Could you, you happen to have the list of the five that you sent out too?
I do.
Could you, could you mention those, please?
Ritter Tile Shop, Complete Floor Covering, Salina Appliance and Decor, Carpet Central, and Sunflower Carpet and Flooring, all here in Salina.
I talked to carpet layer and he didn't know anything about it. And he did say Randy Hedersted puts in their commercial carpet for them. And he was going to check and see if, he was surprised he didn't know anything about it. I just want to make sure that they did get their bids, you know. I'm not sure where Randy works for.
He's at Abilene, commercial.
No, but he works, he does it for a company here in Salina though.
Oh, okay. Because besides the letter of invitation, was it also in the classified?
A publishing, there's one, one week of publishing.
Okay.
And, and he said, nobody looks at that, unfortunately.
I understand that, but that's sometimes their, their fault.
They do have, any vendor has an opportunity to, to contact us and we'll put it in our file whenever we go out and to, for bids and we'll send a letter to them.
Well, this guy said he always had got it, he just didn't see it this time, so I was just kind of trying to, I asked him to check with his boss and found out if they did have it or not, so maybe they just didn't, he said they always bid on it and they didn't.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah, Randy's really good about bidding on all of those things. He did our church, just, and he did it like a one-day, one-day time, two-day time.
Well, he's done, this guy that I talked to has done some for the city and, and he's done some for, did that humanity, humanities, the, what's the ones that,
Salina Arts and Humanities.
Well, the ones that are, just finished a house over off of,
Oh, Habitat?
Habitat, he does Habitat, so he's kind of familiar with them. Just, I just want to make sure people get an opportunity to bid. I mean, getting only one bid, there's something like something's wrong there. Just, you know, I mean, maybe we need to readdress it.
It's what we're really need, but,
It just bothers me that we're not getting bids for these things and, and I'd like to kind of find out why, you know.
If I took a shot in the dark at it, I would just say there's a lot of building and stuff going on with schools, whether it be here locally or surrounding cities as well.
And, and these carpet layers, you know, they pay a lot of insurance, it costs them a lot. They don't just come in and buy a truck and go out and lay carpet, they have to have insurance, they have to, they have to pay workman's comp, they have to do all these things and it costs them so much. I just want to make sure that they are getting the opportunity to bid on these jobs.
Further questions or comments? Any public comment on this?
I share Commissioner Price's concern about the lack of bids. And some of the commissioners already are aware that with the road and bridge, major improvement structure project, there may be only one contractor bidding because there was only one person who attended the mandatory, one firm that attended the mandatory walkthrough. So I think, and, and when I think back on other truck purchases, especially with the fire departments and some of that, there have been times when there has been relatively few bids. And so, you know, I, I appreciate Administrator Dyster's comments. Sometimes it happens, maybe just being on a file. You know, I, I kind of wonder if, if the methods we're using aren't antiquated because sending things out by mail, is that how business communicates anymore? If you get a piece of correspondence in writing from the Saline County Commission, are you going to think it's your taxes or are you thinking, going to think it's a business opportunity? Flagging the outside of the envelope might be a simple step. Another thing is to just look at this in more depth and track how many bids the county is receiving on different things. Because open and fair procurement is what we as taxpayers want to see. And there are plenty of businesses that do go after things that are bid. And this, this speaks to, I think, a broader problem. One idea I would also suggest is, you know, it would take a little bit of advanced planning. But when you do your public announcements, the topic that seems to generate a lot of discussion, why don't we turn that into county business and say, this week, road and bridge is letting out bids for two road graders and a truck, and the sheriff's office is looking for two SUVs, and District Court is looking for carpeting, and you can go to such-and-such place on the website to, to, to find where, where we're doing, what we're doing business, or where we're wanting bid information. And that could be a proactive way of just getting the news out there because people do listen to this presentation and it makes it much more transparent. I'm not so sure, well, let's hope we get our name on our magical list somewhere to, to receive a bid that looks like a tax form or a property tax form. Isn't, isn't maybe the ideal way of doing it? I think more time could go into just looking and assessing this, this situation.
Being we seem to get this one bid, was this issue tied to strictly carpet? Or could there have been other materials put on the floor?
It's carpet tile, it's the removal of and then installation of carpet tile.
What I'm, They're squares, they're like three by three.
But it's still going to be carpet.
18 by 18 carpet.
Why not just laminated wood, would it wear longer? Well, I mean, beans, you're not getting more bids on this material that you want, maybe you ought to put a different requirement up there, they could bid on other material putting in there. Would it be cheaper to put laminated flooring or something?
My experience with laminated flooring is it's a lot more expensive, but carpet,
Maintenance is more, I think.
And carpet is just generally thought of in, in an office environment.
Okay. I guess I didn't know that.
And I, just so the public knows, when Neil puts out a bid, he put out a bid, they get a cost estimate. get a cost estimate, and it's got to be within ten percent of that.
Estimate.
Somebody, if something came in crazy, if we get a crazy bid on Road and Bridge, and it's not within what we feel is a cost estimate, we're going to turn it down. So you're not just gonna, just because you're the only bidder doesn't mean you're, it had this bid been way out of line, and the only bid.
We always have the opportunity to rebid.
Yeah, we have to deny it. We can deny it.
So it's, we're not under, we're not going to be railroaded into spending too much money. It has to be within that ten percent. Am I, am I corrected? It's a ten, about a ten percent? Yeah. But you, you knew.
The engineers estimate.
But you said it was within the amount that you.
Seven hundred dollars.
Right.
Seven hundred dollars, which I think is probably looking at almost two percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're.
You're within that ten percent.
We know what, we have an idea what it's going to cost.
Yep.
Bring it back to the Commission for further conversation or action?
Mr. Chair, I move that we award RFA 136-16 to Ritter Tile Shop in the amount of forty thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars, with forty thousand to come out of the Capital Improvement Plan, and seven eighty-six out of the District Court Budget for the District Courts.
I second that.
Further conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes four zero. Thank you for coming by.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number five.
This is a bid award for a front-end wheel loader, and this is RFA 137-16. Gary Nash, Road and Bridge Director.
Right. Hello Commissioners. Here to award a contract for the purchase of one new front end wheel loader as part of our 2016 EIP. We did sealed bids. We had four of them come back, one from Murphy Tractor, one from Victor L. Phillips, one for Foley Equipment, and also one from Sellers. We'd like to approve the low-cost bid and award the bid Sellers' Equipment of Salina, Kansas for one new DL 250 HL5 front-end wheel loader in the amount of one hundred sixty-one thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars. And that money will come out of our capital outlay line item.
Okay. Questions? Comments?
I guess I have a comment. I, we previously bought mainly from two suppliers, Caterpillar and John Deere, and we had Case come in and present their loader to us, because we want to, we want open bids. On this particular bid, I've got a little concern of not the cost of the, of the equipment, but what the resale in two years from now will be. And I, I really feel that we should go back on this bid and get a, on our road graders, we get a purchase plan, a buyback.
Purchase agreement.
A purchase agreement, and, well, that, maybe this, maybe this road grader is worth two hundred thousand, and then that other road grader is worth two hundred fifty thousand, but when they buy it back, it's worth thirty thousand more than the difference we gave for it. So even though it's a more expensive road grader, when buyback, trade-in time comes, we're going to lose money if, and, and this, this Sellers is Salina, and I'm glad they put in a bid, but I would like to know what their, I, I don't even know the piece of equipment that they sell. I've never seen one. I've seen cases, I've seen Caterpillar, I've seen John Deere's. I was online looking at the, we were looking for used equipment. Caterpillar really brings good resale value. John Deere, if you buy a tractor and it's a John Deere and it's green, when you have an auction, it's going to bring twice what that orange one's going to bring. I want an orange one because I can't afford the green one, I guess. But it is, I think this is important. I think we've missed out on this bid award, and I'm going to ask that we table it and go back and, and get a, find out what our buybacks are on. It's just, this has come up too fast. I think we, I think we need to look at this.
And if I could also comment on that, it's no secret that I'm a, I'm a sea girl, and by no means do I know tractors or any kind of equipment. So I do want to go on record saying that in the past like fourteen or fifteen months, I learned quite a bit about the equipment that Saline County has. But it, I also have learned from my colleagues with Commissioner Smith being a farmer, Commissioner Price being a farmer, and Commissioner Guile, they all know their equipment. And no offense, I think you're kind of on the same boat that I'm in. So I.
I've driven some of this.
Okay, well, I know what they look like, maybe like.
He knows what a Hobart mixer is, I'll tell you that.
So I have to rely on our colleagues. I pay a lot of attention in our discussion upstairs when they start talking about different equipment, the different brand names. They've all dealt in them before. They, they know about the, the purchase price and the, and the sell-back cost, or the buyback cost, I believe is the terminology. So when this was brought up last week, I think it was discovered that this equipment is foreign-made. Well, some of these are probably all foreign-made, but it's a, a different brand name that my colleagues had never heard of before. Now, Sellers Equipment has been in Salina for a long time, and they've got an impeccable reputation. So I, I think that they would not sell anything that they didn't themselves trust or have done homework on. But I, I tend to agree with if that buyback price is important, and it sounds to me like there has been some fantastic equipment with a buyback agreement. That is something that I have learned in my, in my fifteen months on the county, fifteen months or so. So I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Price that maybe we do need to dive into just a little bit more information on the, the Duce product and their resale or their buyback purchase quality. When you're talking, I mean, I realize that they were the bottom man on the totem pole when it came to the purchase price, but the resale value or the buyback option, I think, is just as important. And we just made a comment, I think, upstairs with another presentation, that just because you're the lowest, doesn't mean you're the best. And so if we needed to spend, and I'm just going to use this as an example, if we just needed to spend another twelve thousand dollars because we're going to make back double-fold in the buyback, sometimes I think you have to look at that, at that big picture. And so I'm in a little bit of a quandary on that, just learning what I have learned in these last fifteen months and the discussion about this last week.
Oh, I agree.
And I'm glad we got four bids, though. That's wonderful that we had four bids, you know.
And I would just say, and if we're leaning that way towards tabling it, integrity of the bid process has always been very important to me. So maybe as, because, because, yeah, that's, that's my first thing is, and how do you do that?
Well, it hasn't been exposed.
But anyway, but I mean, I'm sitting there thinking, I think maybe as we start looking, if we are going to start looking at the bid process and, and total picture, we maybe made a mistake earlier because every, every one of those hit our specs.
Yep.
And so, I mean, that, you know, maybe it should have been earlier said, you know, we want something for, we want to be able to look at everything. But when everything hits the specs that we send out, I think that hurts the integrity of the bid process.
Well, if.
I'm still okay with, with what your thoughts are.
And I agree with you, if we as Commissioners are informed of these before it goes out.
Well.
I didn't even know anything about this.
I understand that, but at some point you've got to trust that.
Well, at some point you've got to expect Commissioners to take a stand and say, it's we're, it's our decision, and we want to make sure the taxpayers' money is spent correctly.
Oh, it also, it also needs to be made clear too, that if you want to do a buyback and recycle this machine every five, seven years versus providing it to keep it for the next twenty.
That's the way the bid should have been. If you really want to do this right, it should have been that we, we wanted to know what the buyback would be on all of.
And that probably was part of the criteria.
And it wasn't lovely, so.
Part of the.
I think that you have to honor it.
So in all fairness, you're exactly right.
I think you have to honor it because of that, but.
I would like to go to a buyback program.
And the next time, I can tell you what that John Deere would buy back at. It'd buy back the hundred and seventeen thousand in five-year program.
A hundred and, I'm sorry?
Hundred and seventeen thousand in a buyback program. If we knew what this thing would bring in a buyback program at the same percentage, we would have no problem with it. You understand what I'm saying, Gary?
Yeah, yeah.
We're just, we just don't want to burn up our dollars in something that won't bring enough money back.
I, trust me, I would just soon put three pieces of equipment on a buyback program. One is the front-end loaders, the others, the excavators, and then the motor graders.
Yep.
So if I had my choice, that's the way it would be.
I think that we ought to entertain that. From now on, we need to do a buyback program.
Right.
And, and we, we needed to do that. Needed to probably tell you that.
But I think when we first came to this, it was, we're just going to buy a, a wheel loader and we're going to keep it for twenty years. I think that was the going in rationale versus buyback.
Just to be a, just to be a mediator, I think that we can, we can keep the integrity of the bid process and still potentially table it because we would be bidding on something totally different.
Yep.
You see what I'm saying? Because I don't want it just to go back out and say, we're not going to buy anything foreign, because that's not really.
No, exactly.
No, because even cats are in Brazil.
Right, right. Yeah, exactly, because I've.
Yeah, I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm wanting the resale value.
Well, the resale value is all you need to put in.
I'm trying to find a compromise here, and, and I, I would just as soon move forward, but it seems like we're not moving that way. So if we did, just to keep the integrity of the bid process, I would, you know, like this, I would like to think that it's a totally separate bid, and a buyback would be included in that. So any, any other thoughts? I'd just, you know.
Uh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Unless we proceed as, just to vote, to see where we are today, knowing that from this point forward, we make that a priority, you know, you're, you're about as new on the block as I am as well, so maybe that was something that Commissioner Price and.
Well, you know, I had Case, I had Case come in and present their.
Yep, they did.
These people never, I never heard this. If that would have been presented to me, so I would know what we're putting for bid, I would say, fine, but we were not presented with this fourth loader that got the bid.
But sometimes you're not even, you're not even going to know who it is because the way that whole bid process works, anybody can bid on it. I mean, you could have got a Volvo, could have came and bid.
Oh, they don't tell you what.
It's open to everybody.
But they don't tell you the, the, the brand name of their equipment when they're.
Well, yeah, they did.
The one that bid it.
Specs weren't for a specific brand. It was just for a specific.
We just wanted a wheel loader. Here's the specs. The same thing when we buy a truck. We just put out, here's the specs, and you can't, you're not supposed to really list a specific brand.
Our shop needs a set of five sixteen to inch and a quarter wrenches. That value from Snap-on would be seven hundred dollars. Harbor Freight could put in a bid for thirty-nine dollars. Which ones are we going to buy?
Thirty-nine dollar one?
Well, no, maybe not.
Probably not.
No.
The guy that's going to use them is going to buy Snap-on.
So I'm saying, we need to know what we're buying. I didn't know, I didn't, I wasn't presented with this company and their specifications and what type of tractor and where it's built, and what the resale value is. I know the other ones, and I, I think all the other three I would approve, but this particular one, I don't approve, so I'm not, I think we.
Well, Commissioner Price, you could make a motion to approve the next lowest, which is a difference of about four thousand dollars.
I don't want to do that. I'm, I want to, I, that tractor may be worth more money. We need to look and see. I want to be fair.
I think that we need to table it and let them come in and introduce their, what they have here.
Give us an idea what.
Give us an idea what, what the value of that thing will be in five years.
I, I know, I hate, you know, just like Caterpillar on the road graders, one was a lot higher on the, on one, yet the buyback was high enough on the other one on the John Deere, it, it got a better bid because of the buyback.
Well, and then this last time, they were, they were, they weren't comparable.
I'm going to go back, I'm going to go back to Snap-on Tools. When you have an auction, that Snap-on Tool is going to bring four or five hundred dollars, say, used, and those thirty-nine dollar wrenches are not going to bring thirty-nine dollars because you can go buy them new. You see what I'm saying?
I, I do. And Commissioners Price and Guile, if I could ask you a question, because I'm, I'm a little concerned with they just going to come back and say what it's going to be in five years, because they can say anything that they want to. But let me finish here. I still, I still get back to, I feel uncomfortable not voting on this unless we come back and say it's totally different. So I would go along with the table and would go along with the change in the bid to be one that includes a buyback. And, and I, I, yeah.
I don't think that we can re, whatever you want to call it.
I don't think, I would think you would want to.
Deny this one.
Right. That's, that's what I'm saying.
I don't either. I, that's exactly the way I feel about it, because we're, it's, it's the integrity of doing business with these people.
We'll do the same thing with Road and Bridge. If the bid comes out a lot on it, we don't think it's right, we're going to do what, we're going to watch after the county and taxpayers' money. I'm, I'm thinking of the taxpayers' money.
I agree. I just think it needs to be more than just come back and tell us what it's going to be worth, so. So what I'm hearing then from, from at least the majority of the Commission, or at least half of the Commission, is that we want to deny this and then direct staff to come back with a separate bid that includes a buyback? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I.
Well, we need, we need, we, we need, it'll have to be rebid with, with the specific statement of a buyback on it, so.
Sounds to me like we need to deny this at this point.
Yeah, I, I'll make that motion. I, I just to keep the meeting going here.
I'll take the motion first and then open it up to public comment.
During the discussion. Mr. Chair, I move that we deny or refuse RFA Action 137-16 at this time, and.
That would be.
That would be it. Okay. We'll just deny this RFA.
Public comment on this? Or let me get a second first before I open up to public comment?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, open it up to public comment?
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin, I'd like to remind you a little bit of the history behind this, where we got to this point today. Back on February ninth, sixteenth, and twenty-third, this Commission considered these motions as Director Gary Nash requested a study session for the Equipment Improvement Plan. And I believe in your original Equipment Improvement Plan, it requested a used loader. That was the starting point.
Yes.
As subsequently, there were lots of discussions. I think there was concern that you're not able to find a, a used loader, so the discussion turned to whether you would be better off leasing them or buying them. Commissioner Price, as he's already stated, has said he felt like he knows a great deal about front-end loaders, and it was under his recommendation that you proceed with what you have now. He did mention last week that someone else had approached him and said, you know, if I could have attached a, a buyback option or figure to my bid, it would have been the lower bid. And to me, that sounds like a lease, and leasing was an option that was rejected earlier. What is very apparent to me as a public member is, this is, when the public talks about this group micromanaging, you're doing a real swell job of it today. This is a, a basic piece of equipment that has a frame, four wheels, an engine, and an arm apparatus. If there are problems in the bids, because Director Nash is new, because you're going different directions, then certainly there might need to be more review from the Commission. But you've already taken three or four stabs at this. This is the fifth, fourth, fifth stab. The one thing I would just comment is, overall, you've spent easily an hour or more of your time considering front-end loaders. I wish you would spend an hour talking about other topics like the syphilis outbreak at the Health Department, or what to do about jail, reducing the jail populations. So I would just add that, that you have perhaps the failings in writing the bids is your all, because you've certainly had plenty of opportunities to interact with Director Nash. And if, if you want to be writing the bids, I guess that's, that's the kind of government we, we've, we've got, but I think would really surprise the public.
Well, Karen, Karen, I own four front-end loaders.
No, you've said that, yes.
I know a lot about front, and I talked to some other people that own Case and John Deere loaders, and, and they told me, yes, the Case is a fantastic loader, and I've got, and John Deere and Cat, but they don't even know anything about these loaders. I knew nothing about it. Before we bid on this, I should have known something about it. So I feel that, yes, I am micromanaging, I'm being a Commissioner, and I'm saying, we need to be informed correctly about things before we bid and spend money. I'm not going to buy Harbor Freight Tool for a Snap-on price. That's where I'm at.
All right. Thank you. Any further public comment?
Red Riska, two-thirty-five North Santa Fe. Uh, I agree with the decision today about tabling this to get a little more detailed information about what, you know, to save the, the county some money, and.
We're rejecting it, but that's, I understand.
And, and I, and I understand that, but, uh, I think there was some confusion about what took place, so now's the time to fix it before you have to really have to fix it.
Right, that's right.
Thank you.
All right. Further public comment? Bring it back to the commission. Uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Passes three-one. Move on to item number six.
Excuse me?
You passed this.
Yeah.
For the, for the table or the?
Reject.
To reject, okay.
It's not a table.
Okay, but you said three, three-one.
He voted nay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the vote was three-one.
Okay. I don't know if I can get that right.
You're fine.
And I understand where you're at too.
Yeah.
So, do you wanna do a motion to give him direction, what to do next, or is it just assume they'd go out?
As far as I know, I'm supposed to rebid with buyback.
And, and hang it to us before you put it out for bids. Let us know what your bids, what, what you're gonna do.
Who?
No, they're.
No, I wanna, I wanna know, I mean, put it up for bids, but we need to know the equipment. I think we need to know what the equipment is.
You mean, you wanna specify again?
Well, well, no, no, I'm not, no.
Because that's what you're, I mean, that's, that's what you're asking.
I guess, I guess by asking, I guess for asking a buyback, we're gonna know what the value, the return, so that's fine.
How many of them wanna come back into that?
I don't think we need a motion on that. Just direction towards Mr. Nash. Okay. Thank you.
Any of them that has a buyback, well, that'll, that'll give us a percentage on it.
Item number six.
That's request for Action one thirty-three dash sixteen. It's a, uh, actually for a payment to the Public Defender's Office for their services, uh, at Drug Court, for their representation at Drug Court. They have a staff comment as to any grievance, Community Corrections Director.
Thank you, Don. Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, we've had Drug Court for about three years, and everybody has donated their time. Um, Public Defenders, Treatment, Prosecutors, Community Corrections, Judge Johnson. Um, and this has been going on for a while, and about a year ago, I did receive a request from, um, the Public Defender's Office, and at the state level, not at the local level, that they be compensated for their amount of time. And, um, they give about three hours a week on Mondays, um, between the, um, Treatment Team meeting and the docket, and, um, they would like to be compensated for those three hours per week. Um, I understand their request, um, so I, I did get that. Uh, their hours are sixty-two dollars per hour, so three hours, um, for the remainder of two thousand sixteen, it'd be thirty-nine weeks at a hundred and eighty-six dollars, which equals seven thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars. Um, Judge Johnson and I have spoke extensively about this, and he feels, um, very strongly that, not, not very strongly, feels adamant, must, clients must be represented by a public defender or a defense attorney in all court action. Um, all other things could go to the wayside, and you could still manage a court, but you have to have client representation. The Constitution demands that. So, Judge Johnson made it clear to me that he would like us to try to find these funds and keep our public defenders, um, in the courts. Um, I don't know that public defenders would pull out, but, um, they've made it clear to me that they want this money, and they've requested it at several different levels. I've looked at other options. Um, I looked at grant options and other, um, ways of maybe doing it. Um, it's salary money, um, no matter how you look at it, it's salary. Um, and the grants I looked at would fund salary, but only for a short time period. Um, they wanted to fund a startup drug court, and we are not a start, startup court, drug court, or well beyond that. Um, and so there was not a viable option that I could find out there, um, as far as a grant. Um, so I'm resorting to asking the commission to continue to fund for two thousand sixteen at a rate of seven thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars our public defenders, um, service in Drug Court. I believe that if we do not fund them, that Drug Court could dissolve. I think Judge Johnson is very adamant about that, and so, um, nobody wants to see that happen. We wanna keep that going, and so I would ask your support again, and you've been very supportive of our Drug Court, but I would ask that you continue to support, um, the, um, public defenders in this area.
This is an easy one for me. I mean, I, when you brought it up last week, uh, such an important program, and anything to put, um, it at risk, um, worried me.
We're saving a lot of money for the taxpayers by having this program.
Exactly.
A lot of money.
Well, and I wanna also stress to the people watching us at home, um, that to fund this for the rest of the year is a seventy-two fifty-four, but then we will be discussing funding it for the entire twenty-seventeen.
Correct.
So, we're gonna put the amount of ninety-six seventy-two on our budget.
Right. We've asked, we filed an appeal with the County Administrator's Office in that amount to add to Drug Court for the next following year.
Okay, right. But for now, we're approving just to get caught up through the December thirty-first of this year.
Correct.
Contingency fund.
Correct.
Very good.
Thank you.
And I, I think it's well worth it. I, uh, have been at all of them, but didn't get to hear the last three graduates or two because I had to leave, but we do have now forty graduates that.
Yes, we do.
Have none of them have returned. So, I think that seventy-two hundred and fifty-four dollars is pretty inexpensive. All we have to do is the county, we have to find it. We will.
One of our first graduates about three years ago.
We're right at about three years. I, I think we're a little shy of three years, but we're, we're close to three years, and, um, I, I do wanna say that we were asked by the County Commissioners Association to make a presentation in Manhattan on May fourth. It will be my birthday. I don't know if anybody wants to bring me something. But anyway, um.
I'll put my hat out.
Please, collect, collect a few dollars, please. I'll take a song too. But anyways, um, we were delighted to be asked. I think Rita submitted our name, but heard to consider us a, um, innovative program that has shown so much success. Um, we're excited to go and present to, um, the County Commissioners across the state of Kansas.
I don't know whether Gary realized it, but when KAC talked and they talked about Annie gonna be speaking there, they were, everybody's coming for that. That, I just wanted to verify that.
You just put a little pressure on us, thank you.
It was an absolute unanimous.
Thank you.
Yep, it really was.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, you are. Is there any public comment on this?
Karen Shade, one-one-one, Wisconsin. Um, regarding the use of contingency funds, um, for this process, what concerns me most is that there's very little documentation uh, as a formal request from the state saying, dear Celine County, we need you to pick up these costs. There's no documentation, and as Director Grievous said, she's heard about this for over a year, and my personal guess is money's tight enough at the state level that they're looking into every pot and shaking under, looking under every seat cushion and, and really going after every thousand dollars that they can because the state budget crisis is that tight. Um, my one comment to you all, and I, I do think Drug Court is valuable. I'm not arguing that, but what I am very frustrated about is the way that Director Grievous continues to underrepresent the true cost of Drug Court. It's more than, I believe, a security guard that's paid for. It's gonna be more than these three hours of public defenders. It is Judge Johnson's time, and it's more than his lunch hour. It really is a two-to-three hour process when you think about how things get signed out. It involves county attorney's time, it involves community corrections time, it involves court time, and there's a lot of time that's really there, that I think you are big folks who can understand real costs, and we don't have to piecemeal this out to you in such dribs and drats to get you to buy in and continue to support this. I, it, it is an effective program, but we also need to know its true cost. So, um, I, I would just say, suggest, because you're watching this happen now, there is no documentation to really support this, although I have reason to doubt Director Grievous's request, but I think you need to start preparing yourself in the next budget go-around to need to pick up more and more costs of Drug Court. She said it's been a three-year grant. You're coming near to the end of the three years. It, it, I think the, the state philosophy is that the communities have to start picking up some of their own costs when it is the community itself that decides to what degree it will tolerate substance use or abuse. Thank you.
I just would like to make a few comments. I don't think I've ever underestimated the costs of this program. I, we've made multiple presentations, and we're still hitting the streets, making multiple presentations. We get asked all the time, and I'm always very cognizant of everybody's time because it impacts my time greatly. But also, um, we outline every cent that is given to us and all the grants that I write in addition to help fund this program. So, in addition to the county dollars, that's clearly in every presentation, it's clearly in the budget. Also, we add in the grant dollars that I supplement with to fund this program. So, the exact cost of Drug Court minus what it costs, um, time-wise, and I would be happy to figure that out based on our staff's, but my staff are funded to do this job, so they really don't count in staff, staff time. My staff's, my time and Judge Johnson's time and those kinda things could be, um, figured out if that's what you want. Um, also, to say that I have no documentation on this request. I have emails, um, and I have been looking at this for a while, and, and I did get an email from the state of Kansas, and Judge Johnson and I both reviewed that email, and then Mark Dinkle, who runs the Public Defender's Office here, did send me an email outlining these costs. I didn't randomly come up with sixty-two dollars an hour. I got that from somewhere, and that was Mark Dinkle's office, and he showed me three hours and this many weeks and so forth. So, we do have that, and should you want a letter from anybody at that level, the state level or Mark Dinkle's office, I could get you a letter that clearly asks for these dollars. Um, I would never not be transparent, and I take offense to any implication that I am not transparent. Um, that's one of the things I pride myself on. Uh, you know the work I do. You know the grants I write. You know how I go out and I search for dollars, and so, um, I want it to be clear that, um, I can tell you those things. That's not a problem. Um, should that be requested, happy to provide that to you.
We were, we were there when, uh, we came on board when this started, and we know that you balance all of your grants with us, because if there's not a grant, you remove something in order to balance that grant. Always has, all three years.
That pretty well proves that we're not micromanagers.
We're not micromanagers. She's done a great job.
There's a huge amount of trust.
You bet.
Given to you, and we appreciate what you do, and no, I do not want you to spend that extra time doing that.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
Red Riska, two-thirty-five North Santa Fe. This is a little off subject, but it's about money. It seems that we talk about money quite often, and, uh, there's been some discuss, discussion upstairs about new facilities for community corrections. I'd like to ask one simple question of Annie, and maybe she can answer it, and maybe she can't, but I'll bet she can.
I know.
Uh, when is the agreement up on the current agreement for community corrections lease? Uh, that, that is kind of a, we were trying to figure out what that was, and nobody needed to know, and it seemed to know the answer.
Yeah. I believe the lease is now up, and it's a word of thirty-day or year, however that lease reads.
Month by month.
Month by month. So, um, we're, we're at a month by month moving on. Um, I think things are happening, um, which I'm not allowed to discuss, not from the county commission, but just because, um, um, information from the, um, tenant or the owners, but, um, I, I think they're in the process of trying to do something, but I just know that we're solid at a thirty-day notice. We could give them thirty days, or they could probably give us thirty days.
So, uh, uh, do you have adequate space and facilities for?
No, we do not.
For a new job?
No, we do not.
Effectively?
No. You've been over there.
I know.
Yeah.
I just wanted you to say it.
Okay, I'll say it. No.
Thank you.
Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve, uh, RFA one thirty-three dash sixteen, um, and allocate seven thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars for the fiscal year of twenty sixteen from the Commissioner's Contingency Fund, um, to the, uh, continue the Drug Court.
I second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes four-zero. Moving on to item number seven.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I might go ahead in a minute. I'll clarify that. Of course, I'll put in the information that, that Annie provided to you as far as what that actual total dollars are, three hours, you know, all, all the detail, y'all.
Yeah, it's in the RFA.
As it moves in the RFA.
Yes, it's in the RFA.
Yeah, and I'll put that on in a minute, so.
Okay.
So, it'll be well documented.
Yeah, hopefully.
Yeah.
Um, item seven, RFA one thirty-five dash sixteen, Kansas Department of Corrections, FY seventeen Behavioral Health Grant, and they have, uh, again, Ms. Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director, with comments.
Thank you, Don. Um, this is an annual grant since around two thousand thirteen from House Bill twenty-one-seventy. It was dollars to put out from the, um, Secretary of Corrections to put out to all community corrections agencies across the state of Kansas to work, uh, more successfully with the higher-risk population offenders, um, substance abuse, mental health issues, those kinda things. Every year, we've applied, and every year, we've gotten dollars. Um, and this year, we're applying for, um, well, I'd like to tell you exactly how much. Excuse me. Two hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-six cents, which is forty thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars and three cents more than last year. Um, we have staff funded in here, our high-risk, um, ISO, who deals with mentally illness, substance abuse clients that we get. We have our program provider who does all our cognitive behavior-based, um, trainings, and, um, but both those population of clients must go through those classes. And then, um, we have a contract agent from CKF, Don Green, who is a peer mentor program person who comes over to our office and works with our clients. So, three staff are funded out of this grant, and then the rest of it is all what I call voucher funds. It is for services. Um, detox, inpatient beds, outpatient services, halfway house, structured recovery living, I guess is what I wanna call it, um, bus passes, transitional kind of things to help, uh, the client become more successful as we service them. One of the things we've watched over the last few years, we've trended, um, in detox beds and inpatient beds. They're very expensive, a hundred and eighty dollars a day, but we're utilizing them very, very frequently, and a large portion from Drug Court. Um, instead of putting them in jail, we're putting them in services. We're getting them treatment, which is what we should be doing. We're also servicing them in the health services for evaluations and services, and, um, one thing I increased quite a bit was transitional housing. We're moving them from services, inpatient beds, to recovery houses. Um, recovery houses cost about four hundred dollars a month per person. So, those are a little costly too. Good deal, you're getting great support, but it's, it's something that we're doing. We're able to pay for those services when clients can't pay for it themselves, um, to increase the likelihood that these clients will recover, become healthy, and become sustainable citizens of our community. These are our community members. They are, we are responsible for them, in my opinion. Um, they've been placed on by the court, and we have an opportunity with this grant application each year to service them with these dollars. So, I'm seeking approval to submit this to the Department of Corrections. It's due May thirteenth. I got it done earlier because, as I call this season, grant season, and I have several grants on my table right now, and so I'll be weeding through them. Um, so I got this one done. I'd like permission to, um, send it into the Department of Corrections, um, for allocation results. It has been in front of the board, um, Advisory Board, and it was approved at the Advisory Board level, and I'm seeking your permission to go ahead and forward it on.
All right. Questions? Public comment?
Karen Shade, um, earlier upstairs, you made a decision not to vote on a community restitution board member because Commissioner Smith wasn't here. Um, I might suggest that you hold off or use that same line of reasoning when you, when it comes to regard to approving this grant. He has, has taken up a, a leadership role in, on this topic. I wanted to ask Director Grievous, um, how has interactions from the county commissioners and the advisory, um, committee to reduce the jail population shaped this grant?
Uh, this is not in line directly with the jail population, um, recidivit, um, reducing or the recidivism that's going on there. Everything that Community Corrections is, does, does try to reduce jail population and certainly prison population. So, the more likely we are to make these clients successful and help them be successful by stopping substance abuse and mental health illness and working with that, would, would reduce at any level, jail, bed space, and prison bed space.
So, so it's kind of just, it, there's, there's been a general trying to synthesize, um, pref, preferences toward a global goal.
Well, Community Corrections in nineteen eighty-seven was established to reduce prison populations. That's why the legislators had put us into business. Um, and so everything I do is going to be focused on reducing prison populations. Um, certainly, we wanna reduce our jail population also, but everything we do is going to be to try to make these clients successful.
At the March, um, advisory, um. At the March Advisory, um, Committee Meeting, the focus was on, on using cognitive behavior-based interventions. And when Commissioner Smith summed up the meeting for you in the, the morning weekly update, he said it was good and that's about all he said. Um, I didn't come away from that meeting, um, with that kind of summary. I typed up my notes. Uh, I've modified my notes a little bit so they fit on, um, two pages of, of what was discussed. It before, several times before you, I've heard Director Grievous say, "If we could only start some of the cognitive-based, um, interventions that are taught in class," and this is a program provider, and the program provider is in this grant, I believe, so this is how it's relevant. Uh, "If we could only start that in jail, we'd be that many steps ahead of getting them to change their thinking so that they would change their behaviors and their lives." Um, so we had a better than a 30-minute presentation. The presentation was well done, but as you drop to, um, the bottom third of my notes, you'll see that of the classes that are taught, they take 20, 22 weeks, 24 weeks. Um, it was common, it, the, the trainer, the program person said, you know, "It takes people 13 weeks before they start having realizations that if they change their thinking, they could be in a totally different situation." And as Ellen Mitchell, county attorney, said, "Jail is short-term." And there is, there's, there are, were no programs there except for one one-hour anger management class that was transferable perhaps to a jail setting. And I was wholly disappointed because I really thought, you know, every time I've heard Director Grievous, there are things that can be done. She's positive, she's can-do. And for me, there was a fundamental disconnect in what was being proposed versus what reality is. And so, you know, um, as she has said, and since she appeared before you last week, you've all had plenty of time and should you have input that you want to provide to her as she's writing these additional grants, I would hope you would do that. As we heard with the front-end loader issue, the problem exists now because it wasn't addressed back in February. So now is the time she has to submit her grants. I would think that, that this is the time for, for you to all be putting, I, I would think a study hour would be very appropriate on this topic, um, but that hasn't been the will of this group. It's, it's been micromanaging front-end loaders. Um, that's just my opinion. Um, and I, I just would suggest, you know, if you're going to be consistent with decisions made earlier today, you would delay this until Commissioner Smith is back and he can review all three. And there might be benefit to all of you reviewing all, all of her major grants that she's submitting.
Any other public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Uh, Mr. Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I move that we approve FY17 KDOC behavioral health proposal as budgeted, as recommended by staff.
I second that.
Any conversation?
I, uh, I think Dave would be voting yes on this.
I think he would too. And I think the timeframe, the timeframe of this is a little different than, um, needing somebody to fill out a committee.
I'm very happy with the vote on this.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Reposed? Passes four zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work and your presentations today. Item number eight.
Have a planning and zoning update with David Neal, planning and zoning director.
Thank you for your patience.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Well, um, looks like we're running a little bit late and you have some other things on your agenda, so I'll try to
We got time. We got time. You're a person.
Yeah, we're, we have no problem.
That's what I was going to say. I'll give you the two-minute drill and get through this for you. Uh, permitting, we're going as smoothly as ever. A little slower than I expected, but that's okay. Um, big thing coming up and more for everybody out there in TV land, uh, fireworks permits. The deadline is coming up May 20th. It's all, already that time of year. I've already talked to one person that's, uh, working on theirs and the other three that come up in the county regularly, he does a good job of getting it in on time. But anybody else that's thinking of starting fireworks, stay at city or county actually, May 20th is your deadline to get those in. And with the county, like always, all the proceeds from the permits go to the rural fire departments unless the commission decides otherwise. Um, big permit I'm expecting sometime soon, you probably saw this in the paper, they're looking at renovating Coronado Heights. So permit-wise, we're just going to make that as easy as possible because there shouldn't be much for me to review on something like that. Um, usual work going on, Land Institute's, uh, building their research facility. They're actually planning another greenhouse sometime soon. Webster Conference Center is still working on that dining hall. Um, Heartland Fuels and Christchurch Church are still working on theirs. Actually, that church should be finished pretty soon, I hope. For planning activity, last month we had our annual meeting. The planning commission wants to look a little more in-depth in the comprehensive plan. So we're going to review that a little more in-depth, what's in the plan, what it means to the county, if we need to do any updates to that plan. Um, they should be able to get you a recommendation of what they want to do, hopefully sometime soon. We're also going to look at, uh, home occupation codes. We had talked about this earlier. We want to look at home occupations to make sure we have clarity on what is and what isn't a home occupation so that I can just administratively approve occupations, get them into business out on their home. And if it goes beyond whatever the limit is the planning commission thinks is appropriate and you guys, because you approved the rules in the end, then that's something we can work on too. The big part with the planning commission, next week we're going to meet and talk about appointments to the board. We don't have to make the appointments right away. So if you're looking for more candidates or anything else like that, we can do that. Um, two weeks from now, I'm looking at, at least doing the reappointments for the planning commissioners that their term is ending, they'll be up for a second term. And that is, uh, Tom Rex drew, Leslie Barron and Michael Trow. When it comes down to it, I just need at least one person reappointed and then the rest of it, we can figure out as we go on.
I'd like to make a comment about our department. Uh, I've had some people really complain about the city zoning and the things they have to go through and building permits and all the things they have to do and how tough it is to get anything done in the city and how they're ready just to go to another city to do their work. And yet I don't get any complaints about our county. I think our county runs very smooth and well and, uh, I really appreciate that and I think we're doing a very good job.
Well, thank you. I, I try to make it easy.
Well, I think it is. I, I don't hear complaints, so it must, you guys hear any complaints?
The only complaints that we've heard is, the only complaints that we've heard is on the septic system.
Oh, yes.
We have had that.
But that's a, that's a state health thing too.
Yeah.
That's not just, that, that's not the county.
But when you go into a situation that somebody wants to spend money, you say, you know, they're here and they want to be there and you're, you're the type that says, "Let's get you there."
Right.
You're not the gate, you're not trying to be the gatekeeper, "Get through me."
I, I look at two things.
Makes things so much easier.
I look at two things. One, you tell me what you want to accomplish. I'll try to provide as many ways to get you there as possible and I'll try to do it in the cheapest way I can think of, at least for you as the applicant. The other thing I try to look at is if there is a rule there, why is it there? So I can explain why it's there. I would rather have you come in and ask a question and go away disappointed because you won't be able to overcome whatever the rule is for some odd reason than buy the piece of property, then come in, "Well, now you have a piece of property you can't do anything on." So I'd rather disappoint you ahead of time. Doesn't happen too often, honestly.
What I think I'm saying is we keep it simple and easy. And that's the way it should be. And we don't want to make it difficult for people to do something in the county.
That's also, uh, the nature of zoning. It is more difficult in cities. The more people you get clustered together, the more issues you have to look at, the more you have to protect the people. So city planning is just naturally more difficult.
Another, uh, question was on Webster. Have they got their sewer out there yet?
Um, I have to double check. That is part of the whole permit process and I know the city has made some agreements to extend sewer out.
So they're on it though?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I care.
And that's, when we get to the, uh, the violation section, the only reason they're there is because I haven't officially cleared it out. It's all being worked on. I'm not worried.
I just wanted to hear that.
And it's, as far as my understanding, they may actually start hooking up other buildings to that sewer line, which is a good thing for us.
Good.
Now, let's see, planning cases, the violations, like to talk about, most of these things, we're trying to get it worked out. Working with FEMA is never the easiest thing in the world. Um, for one that's in the floodplain, we're trying to get that cleared from the floodplain. Um, Webster is just trying to work out there. Waiting for the end of construction is basically what I'm waiting for. For environmental health, we've actually been pretty busy this quarter. Uh, we did about 48 inspections out there. We still have radon kits, so anybody out there that needs to test their house for radon, I don't care if it's a new house, an old house, come in and get a free kit so that we can get it tested for you. We've done 16 homes so far, have been, had radon systems installed. We've got another three that they're working on right now. And we started doing testing on new homes in Salina. Salina has put in place, uh, radon-resistant construction. They tried to put in a passive system, which is basically just a pipe to help lead the radon out of your house. And in testing those, I don't have all the numbers yet, but we've had a few that are not meeting the, what we're expecting for radon levels. They're above the four Pico carries that we are expecting. So we're helping them out by getting some, all we have to do there is install a fan. But at the same time, we want to see if that program is working for Salina and how we can educate contractors and everybody else on how to do that system better. So like I said, even if you have a new house, come in and we'll give you a test to test it out. Um, other things going on, the floodplain mapping, I am hoping to hear something from the state either this month or next month to get the official kickoff so that we can start that process. We have to notify everybody, let them know where the changes are and we'll be mailing out a lot of letters for that. We'll probably have to talk to a lot of people. If anybody is out there that's curious right now, please stop by my office. I will show you what your property looks like so you can see what the changes will be like. Um, other than that, this last, about last week, I went to the National Conference for Planning. A lot of good information out there. Uh, they always tend to focus more on cities because there's a lot of more planners in the cities. But they had some good sessions on rural planning, talking about the problems of rural planning, which other states are facing the same thing we are. Uh, lots of good information on retail markets, just picking up what's going on new, uh, law information, ethics that I have to keep up on. But that's all I have for you.
All right. Questions or comments? We have any public questions or comments? Thank you for your presentation and your patience being here. Um, is there any other business that needs to come for the commission at this time? Under announcements, I just would like to say we will reconvene for meeting number three upstairs briefly, uh, to meet with North Central Regional Planning Commission and continue with a 3 o'clock road and bridge tour, um, that I believe all commissioners are going to be on. And then we will also all be in attendance at the county commissioners quarterly meeting tonight in Clay Center. Are there any other announcements?
Yeah, I have an important announcement, uh, Friday at the senior citizen. They're going to have liver and onions.
There you go. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
So I'm going to